Okay, I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission's virtual public hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the Planner's assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in October. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Additional information is required. Decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor and opposition or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note, you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentation. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear, allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, and with concern. This is not a vote, and it's not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we have one petition tonight. So we'll go on to hear PC 25-21 DLJ Lindbergh LLC.
Good evening. Tonight, we have PC 25-21 DLJ Lindbergh LLC requesting an amended C8 on a .8 acre tract of land on the north side of Lindbergh Boulevard, approximately 360 feet east of Wisteria Lane. So here you can see, in the county context map, our site is located in South St. Louis County. On the right, you can see the aerial where the site is outlined in red. Looking at the land use map, our subject site is gray and outlined in red. As you can see, to the north and to the east of our site, on the same side of Lindbergh Boulevard, we have various commercial uses, some retail shopping centers, movie theater, a church, some restaurants and banks. To the south and west of our site, we have, to the west, we have single-family residential uses. And a little further west, we have Lindbergh High School. And then adjacent to the south of our site, we do have two small multifamily developments. Again, here is an enlarged aerial. Our site is outlined in red, and you can see a lot of the commercial development as well as the surrounding residential development. Looking at the photos of the site, this is looking into the north of the site. At the southern property line, you can see the Fitz's Bottling Company and the Outback Steakhouse in the back. This is looking east at the current sign on the site. And you can see that there is a bank adjacent to the site and some more commercial. Looking to the west, the western property line, you can see the small medical office that's adjacent to the site. Again, this is standing at the southern property line, looking into the site, looking into the north. This photo is looking down Lindbergh Boulevard, westbound. And here we are looking eastbound on Lindbergh Boulevard. And next, we have the petitioner's presentation.
Okay, thank you. We have the petitioner here?
Sir, Mark Dorn.
Mark, you should be able to share your presentation now. It is coming up.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Wayne Dorn. I'm President of Dorn Engineering with offices at 504850 Lima Village in South St. Louis County. Sitting next to me this evening is Chris Ford. Chris is Principal with DLJ Lindbergh Properties. That's the owner of the tract. And he's also the President of Fortune Bank. So he's also going to be a user of the tract. With that, I'd like to have Chris introduce himself to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. It's a pleasure to be with you guys tonight. We appreciate you looking at the proposal. We've been excited about this site for some time, since we bought it back in 2017. When we took it over, our only tenant at the time was Outback Steakhouse with the rest of 20-plus thousand square feet vacant. We've been very fortunate to find Fitz's Root Beer and partner with them at the site along with Burn Boot Camp. It's brought a lot of good energy to the center. And we're looking forward to hopefully adding Duncan and a Fortune Bank there. We think it'll be a nice addition to the parcel. And as you can see from the presentation that Mark will present, we believe it provides not only a great use for the area, but much-needed landscape for the tract. And we think it'll really round out the development.
Thank you, Chris. Again, the existing zoning is a C8, and the proposed zoning is a C8. It's just a different site plan review. On this drawing, north is up. We have Lindbergh Boulevard along the south and Baptist Church Road to the east. Subject tract is located right there, as earlier said. And we have some residential to the south and to the west, and also to the north. We have commercial directly to the west. We have commercial C8 directly to the east and the north. Some C8 all the way over at Baptist Church and Lindbergh Boulevard. C3, the old, well, I forgot what name of that plaza is anymore. But I was gonna say the old Gressel Plaza, but I'm wrong on that. There's some C3 locates there and some multifamily across the street of Lindbergh Boulevard. So our tract, the DL Properties owns, is this entire area in red. There's two separate lots there. There's a larger lot to the north, the upper part of the sheet. And the part of the petition is the lower track up against Lindbergh or to the bottom of the drawing. That subject tract again is .8 acres. The back of the site presently is occupied by Christ Memorial. This is the area that we don't own on this commercial tract. Right next to them is Incredible Pizza. As Chris mentioned, we just added Burn Boot Camp, and it's a very nice facility, and I encourage you all to go out and look at it. Very impressive. The Outback Steakback is my favorite restaurant in South County, but I probably shouldn't say that. The new Fitz's in this area here, which has really turned out to be also a nice improvement to the area. So we're looking at a pretty much asphalt area on the parking lot, and it looks like an asphalt area for many years now. And we like to put Dunkin' Donuts and Fortune on there. We think we have an excellent site plan going forward. This is a picture in the back, looking at Christ Memorial. You can see where the arrow points there. And that's looking at the Christ Memorial Lutheran Church. They've been there probably about 15 years. And moving up from the back, this is Incredible Pizza, what it looks like today. And here's that Burn Boot Camp that's on our parcel, on DL, a Lindbergh Properties parcel. And very nice product again, please visit it sometime. Fitz's Bottling, excellent food, great shakes, nice improvement here. And Outback is still doing business at that location. To the west of us, there is a retail strip that's been there for many years. That's a picture of that there. That's not part of our ownership, but it is to the west of us. And then straight across the street, this is actually our secondary entrance. It's a right-out-only. And across the street, we have some multifamily as viewed there. And then the main entrance is signalized, so it's a very safe access to the site. And there's apartments across the street from that signalized entrance section. This is a picture from across Lindbergh. It shows the site that we're proposing to develop. Again, a lot of asphalt in that area. You see Fitz's Bottling Company and Outback behind our proposed outline. This here picture is if we're standing right on the front of the Outback, looking out towards Lindbergh. And again, the same thing, you see the asphalt pavement that's out there and the entry sign on the left there to the developer. We have previous approval a couple of years ago. It was for Freddy's fast food there. Things didn't turn out to work out. So Freddy's located down the street from us in South Lindbergh. But this was the previous approval that we had under the C8 zoning. So this is our proposed site plan here. Again, at this area here, that's the main entrance on the Lindbergh, and that's fully signalized as we saw in the previous pictures. The secondary entrance to the entire commercial tract is right there. And again, it's a right-out-only. The existing information sign that we just saw is going to remain in that location. And we have a proposed dual-use building. We're going to have Dunkin' Donuts in the one area, and we have Fortune Bank in the other area. There'll be a main entrance, and there'll be a lobby that'll take you to both the Dunkin' Donuts and the Fortune. Share a lobby is kind of a new concept where hopefully the patrons can go back and forth and feel comfortable with the interior that is there. We have a drive-through window for the bank, and that'll sit here. Not drive-through window, well, a drive-through window, let's call it that, with the facade over it. And again, this area here is going to be our parking lot. And we're going to have internal entrances and exits located in that area. Again, we're not exiting directly off of Lindbergh. We're using the signalized and the restricted turning entrance that is to the west of the site. The drive-through for the Dunkin' Donuts will be located there. Now, we have over 260 feet of stacking for the Dunkin' Donuts. We sell donuts and coffee, and they do a very good business. But we have 30 vehicles of stacking from the left arrow to the right arrow. So we have a situation here in South County where cars are backing up on the South Lindbergh. Will not happen at this site, as we have 13 car spaces between those two areas and several more spaces still on our site. So we anticipate that we will have plenty of stacking, and nobody will be backing out on the South Lindbergh with this petition. Up here is where the drive-through exits. They can make a right turn and come back out to the signalized entrance section at the bottom right of the sheet here. We have our menu board located here. Again, this is the bank drive-through area. And we'll have drive-through tellers with a window here so they can see the patron as they arrive for the drive-through and help them out with any needs that they may have. We need two vehicles of stacking as required by the county ordinance for the drive-through area. Also, we want a concrete patio area because we envision this as being a nice place for gathering, Dunkin' Donuts and the bank. So we'd like a little outside area there just for gatherings. We're going to put a proposed sidewalk along Lindbergh Boulevard. Be located, gray area there. And we'd like to have a monument sign for our east here. We have a lot of landscaping on this plan compared to the asphalt that is there presently. We have a landscape buffer along Lindbergh, very nicely done. We're now going to have a landscape buffer along the aisle that drives back to the main portion of the tract. Right now, it's all asphalt. There's nothing that delineates that main aisle from anything except pushing striking. We're going to put a concrete island with landscaping in that area and beautify it and make it look like an entrance. We also have landscaping along the back, same discussion. And we have landscaping on the west side also. We also have some islands that are going to be nicely landscaped. So the existing site has very little green space, as we've seen. The proposed site has 1/3 green space, which is an amazing improvement in green space for this particular area. Now, there's a storm sewer that runs through the site along those blue lines, okay? We're going to use that in place, and you can see we built our, we're going to construct our buildings as such, and we will not interfere with this MSB storm sewer. In addition to that, because of the amount of proposed green space compared to the amount of asphalt that's out there now, the stormwater runoff from this site will be substantially decreased. So that's a major improvement for any areas that we have here in South County. This is Fortune Bank Headquarters in Arnold, Missouri. Please take a look at the quality of the construction. That's one heck of a building there, guys, okay? And we tend to do the same thing here in South County. We want to build quality. This is a rendering of our proposed building. We have masonry up to about seven feet. And then we have some ethos, very nicely done with our logo up there. And then I'm going to call this as a fortune dome. It matches the dome that's on our headquarters on the previous picture that I showed you of the Arnold site. I'm going to back up here a minute. I apologize. But this is as you're viewing it from entering the main entrance from Lindbergh Boulevard. So you're viewing this from the southwest. But as you come through the signalized entrance, this is what you will see. This is a view more so from the Outback, from that building, which shows the Dunkin' Donuts better in our building up front. Again, the ethos there, and we have some ethos on the Dunkin' Donuts, but very nicely done. Masonry in this area here. And this is going to be our entrance to the common lobby that I discussed earlier. Again, we want to have this a feeling of both places are very open, very people-oriented. We will submit final elevation renderings to the Planning Commission for your approval. In summary, DLJ Properties wants to continue to beautify the front of an aged commercial property. Showing my age here, but I remember when that was started years ago. But it's been a long need for some improvements. And the addition of Fitz's and the Boot Camp have been very good. And this will finish off what we're trying to do with this parcel. We're going to provide a coffee-donut shop with stacking that will not back up on the Lindbergh Boulevard. We think that's a major plus. We're going to remove a lot of hard pavement and replace it with a lot of green landscape and soften up the appearance of the entire commercial development. We're going to reduce stormwater due to the converted green space. We have safe, signalized access on the Lindbergh Boulevard. We're going to create some new jobs in South County, increase our tax base. We're not asking for any tips or nids requested. There will be no government participation in this whatsoever. We think it's a quality development for St. Louis County, and we appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, Chris and I would be happy to try and answer them for you.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Keith?
Yeah, I probably missed it. What's the hours of operation for the Dunkin' Donuts?
I do not have that with me. I believe it will be 6:00 AM to 9:00 or 10:00 PM at night. But I can get that verified for you.
Okay. And then I know you guys always use a trained workforce. It's usually local. Is that probably what's going to happen?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is this a seven-day-a-week operation?
The Dunkin' Donuts will be, yes, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, I just got another question. Was, is, is there a lease down there through the school for those teenagers that are still parking cars down here?
There is not. We haven't had a, we haven't had a need for the space out front, so we haven't wanted to tow those kids yet. But when Fitz's before COVID, when they were open, we did ask a few of them. We just reminded the school district that they were parking there, and they'll send out an email for us. And so we probably do need to address that again now.
Very good. Thank you. Hey, anyone else? Seeing none, we thank you. At this time, we'll take comments. Mel, I'll let you take it.
Sure. So if you would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding this request, you can click the raise hand button next to your name on the participant list. It may also be in the bottom rightmost corner of your screen. If you don't see the raised hand button, you can say in the chat that you would like to make a comment. I don't see anyone yet, but, oh, here we go. This is Lori Tracus. Lori, you're unmuted to give your comments.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. First of all, looking at the sketch, it looks like Lindbergh, I'm just having a difficulty trying to get orientated because it looks like Lindbergh is on the bottom of the map. Is that Lindbergh there versus where the building is sitting at? Because the building, when I look straight on, looks like it is on the east part of the parking lot.
Lindbergh is on the south side. It's on the bottom part of the screen there, and I apologize. I'm having a little trouble hearing you. There's some noise going on in the background.
Mel, did you understand what I was asking?
I guess I did. This is the noise in the background.
Sorry, I was muted as well. I believe she was asking about the building location in relation to Lindbergh Boulevard. I don't know, Mark, if you want to go back to the aerial and point out the building location on the.
If you just, I'm sorry, let me just jump in here. But on this diagram that I'm looking at, it has Lindbergh on the bottom of the page. And so, which would be south, just for this picture here, our diagram. And so it looks like the building's on the east side, but I don't think that's where the development is going to be at, correct?
It's going to be on the west side of the main entrance. The Dunkin' Donuts and the bank building are on the east side of this parcel. But again, we're on the west side of the entrance. Is that answering your question?
It does, but I'm just trying to understand the sketch that's up here. When I see Lindbergh.
Move back, move back up. I understand why you said that now, Mel. Maybe this will answer the question better. But that's our parcel right there. Does that help you out?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the sketch that was up there originally and where it says Lindbergh on the bottom. And maybe because I'm not able to see the full sketch, maybe Lindbergh is really to the east or the west there.
No, it is to the bottom.
Okay. So on this diagram then, Lindbergh, so this is going to be up against Wisteria Lane.
No. Wisteria Lane is to the west. Wisteria Lane there? Yeah, the red is our subject tract. Wisteria Lane is to the west of that. There's a commercial strip building there first, and then there's a, there's houses, and then there's Wisteria Lane to the left of the red square there.
So you guys are proposing to go directly across from the Outback?
In front of, directly in front of the Outback. I would say that.
Okay, so when I look at that original sketch that you have on there, when I look at Lindbergh being below, this development looks like it is to the east. So that's where I'm confused in looking at the direction. But nevertheless, the other question is, is there a commitment or a lease with Duncan?
Chris, go ahead.
We're, we're working on that as we speak. We wanted to get comments back from the Planning Commission before we progress with that. We have a good relationship with them on the lease of ours. So, so yeah, we're just waiting to get approval.
Okay, and the last question when it comes to Duncan is what kind of menu board as far as the order board goes and the volume and what have you? That would be the only other thing. I might not be able to answer that at this time, but if you could get that, that'd be great.
Well, that's, that's a great question. That menu board sits back about 50 feet from Lindbergh Boulevard, the right-of-way. And then the right-of-way of Lindbergh is another 100 feet wide. And then there's about another 40 foot set back to the existing apartments on the other side of Lindbergh. So we're about 190 feet with the message board from the nearest residential building. And with the traffic noises on Lindbergh, they're not going to hear a thing from our menu board.
Mr. Dorn, I'm talking about from compared to Wisteria. And so if you could just point out where your menu board is again, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Can you see that cursor right there? By that red car there? That's where the menu board is. And again, Wisteria was about 300 feet to the west in that direction.
So in looking at this diagram again, is the drive-through, the rear part, the menu part, is that going to be parallel to Lindbergh?
No, that's perpendicular to Lindbergh. The back of the drive-through part will be behind the building. Well, the building will be between the drive-through part and Wisteria is far to the west from there. So the cars that are in the drive-through part are going to actually be blocked by the building from the residents several hundred feet to the west from the left of the.
Mr. Hillsinger, I apologize. I think I went a little bit out of order on your protocol. I'm so sorry.
No, no. Ask your questions, absolutely. Lori, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, we have Scott Josie, Josie, excuse me if I've mispronounced that. Scott, you're unmuted to make your comments.
Hi, how are you? Thanks for having us here. So I was involved in this process a few years ago when we were trying to get Freddy's in there. And I thought it was a terrible idea then. I'm in the first house on Wisteria. Back up to Mark Fuhrer's building. It's the little office building that has the, the hearing aid place in it, which is the only thing separating Wisteria and, and our neighborhood. Now, my concern is that now that Fitz's is in there and the Boot Camp is in there and Outback's doing well, and people think that the pandemic's over, the traffic in and out of that on an average weekend night is busy. Now, I understand what you're saying, that I assume this will still have some evening hours because of the Dunkin' Donuts, but it can get pretty, pretty dangerous. Do you guys have any plans to alter that right-only exit? How, how are you going to keep that? Because that, that's a big problem. It's a non-signalized, right-only exit onto Lindbergh on a busy Saturday night? I mean, I assume you fellows have been up here and looked around on a Saturday night. The parking lot's full. Where are those folks going to park once you take up half the lot? Are they going to park in front of the church's property and use their spots? Because even without the Dunkin' and the Fortune Bank there, and I assume this is a Dan Jones project, I'm guessing, by the initials. Without that extra parking there, where are these folks going to park on a Saturday night when they're flooding into Outback and Incredible Pizza and Fitz's? I mean, there's a lot of business going on in the, however, 10, however many acres that just your property's sitting on.
Okay, we'll ask them to answer that on rebuttal.
Okay, next is Terry Balance. Let me move her up. Terry, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am just, I'm also kind of asking what that person before me asked is because I live in the condominiums directly across from this development. And those lots are jam-packed, like jam-packed. And also, I'm concerned about, I like the green space idea tremendously, but I don't like the thought of large quantities of chemicals being sprayed on all of this new green space that will then travel by air and so forth into my, you know, air quality. So I'm concerned that you would be, if there's, obviously will be chemicals being used of some kind, that they would be, keep in mind and use organic only or not use chemicals? Because that is a concern when you're going to put in a lot of green and strawberry, it looks like, and which will be beautiful. But, but the other concern, like the previous person, is that parking lot is packed. I mean, and people do turn out of that, that. I mean, and people do turn out of that, that turnout space that he mentioned that's right-only. They are making left turns all the time just to avoid all the traffic. So those are two of my concerns. In addition to, I guess I'm just like, is the bank that's already in there going away? Or, I mean, how many banks do we need in one small area of Concord Village? Because you've got, well, a bank on all three corners at the next intersection down.
Okay, we'll ask them to answer that on rebuttal.
Okay, at this time, I don't see anyone else, but if you do want to make a comment, please click the raise hand button next to your name or possibly in the bottom right corner of the screen. But at this time, I don't, oh, I'm so sorry. We have Scott Millsark. Scott, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yes, I would like to also point out the safety of that right turn. It's also supposed to be a non-left turn entrance, and I've, I've also live in the Westeria Lane road, and that is kind of a dangerous intersection. Also, the comments about, I have also seen the parking lot very full and thinking about where the Outback and the Fitz's patrons will park. You can see there's a large parking lot, but then they're crossing the main alley. Have you talked to Fitz's and Outback about this proposed addition to their parking space?
Okay, we'll ask them to address that.
At this time, I don't see any other public commenters.
Okay, petitioners, can you?
First question was on parking.
Yes.
This site was developed with cross-parking, cross-access parking for all parcels, all users for the entire parcels. I have been up there on Fridays and Saturdays nights. This is my old stomping ground, probably my current stomping grounds. There are a lot of cars parked in the front, absolutely, but there's not too many cars parked to the back. Again, the, the hours of the Dunkin' Donuts, you have very few cars after 7:00 o'clock at night. Really, that's, that's an AM business. Dunkin' Donuts and the bank will be closed. So we have plenty of parking on the sites. We will have to justify that to St. Louis County with the uses and the calculations to justify that, which we can do that. And we actually have already done that once. As to the concerns about pulling on the Lindbergh Boulevard, Lindbergh is a very busy boulevard. There is exceptionally good site distance for both entrances here on Lindbergh Boulevard. So if you do what you're supposed to do, you should be fine. The one being signalized speaks volumes for safety getting in and out. And the, the entrance to the west, which is right-in, right-only, that is required that way by MODOT for safety. We are not going against MODOT in this discussion whatsoever. We think MODOT has used a lot of good common sense in making it a right-in, I'm sorry, a right-out-only, and we are going to comply with that. As for fertilizers on their grasses and their trees, we will use what's acceptable by St. Louis County, and we will comply with all St. Louis County standards for that. As for Fitz's and Outback knowing this, knowing what's going on, yes, they do. They're our tenants, and we have a long relationship with them. And we have to make sure they're okay with what's going on also. So they know what's going on. And there's plenty of parking on the site for all the evening. If you have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Mark, can you address the younger bank? There was a question on.
Yes, you know, I laughed years ago when I worked at Fox and Cold. There was a rule, you couldn't have a bank within two miles of each other. And that was in the old days when they did, they said, they thought competition would drive banks out of business. And we used to do surveys and actually physically measure in the field that were two miles away from the nearest bank. However, the feds have changed their rules, and they think competition is a good thing, which is good in a lot of different areas. And we have to get this approved by the feds, and we will fit into their formula. And if we fit into the formula, we will have a bank there and it allows to be there, which we have all indications it should be there.
Is that bank a separately-owned parcel?
Yes, that is not our, yes.
Okay. That explains it. Okay, anyone else? Commissioners? Seeing none, we have nothing else. So should Melissa go ahead and adjourn?
Yeah, I'll just mention the survey real quick to, for all the attendees in the audience. When you leave the meeting, you should have a survey pop, hop up that asks if you're in favor of this request, opposed, or if you have concerns. And as the chairman mentioned in the, in his opening remarks, that crowd count is made part of the record. So please do take that survey when you exit the meeting.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it 5-0, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.